Good evening, everybody. Tonight, night for the zoning board at 7:00 o'clock, we petition 980. We got it till 9:80.
Yep. The Halifax zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 3rd, at 7:00 PM in the Board of Selectments Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall. The application by Nancy and George Gonzev for a special permit for an existing in-law apartment located on 102 Hayward Street, Halifax. Said property is owned by Nancy and George Gonzev of 102 Hayward Street, as shown on Assessor's Map 121 Lot 9, Book 14255, Page 0164. The applicant is seeking a new special permit for an existing in-law apartment in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 167.7, Schedule Use Regulations in 167.7D12. The area is owned residential in its petition 980. Right on time. Say?
Anybody here who have the... You want to speak your petition?
I wanted to remove the permit that had last due to not... I didn't receive... I know that I didn't see the renewal notice in '21. I did renew in 2016, but I didn't see the renewal notice in 2021.
Do you have family members that live in your apartment right now?
Mm-hmm.
Nothing has changed, you just want to renew it?
Correct.
Any member of the board want to add something?
No, get all the paperwork filled out.
Gee, since in 1996.
I know.
That is impressive.
Nothing has changed.
Nothing has changed.
Anybody want to make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve petition number 980.
Second, second motion? To approve petition?
You second?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Myself, yes. It passes. You got your renewal. You have your renewal. That was pointless.
Yeah, that's the best one we've had all year. Sure, someone will be mad about that on Facebook, but it seemed like it go pretty swell.
Mr. Chairman, can you... There's a folder within the decision form that you guys need to sign.
I saw that.
It should say he's like...
I think it's underneath. Ah, that one. Typed out and sent.
Seeing that it's 7:05, I would have to refuse myself. One of you two kind of have to take over.
Let me get my glasses on. I can read it if you want, so we can go ahead. The Halifax zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 3rd, at 7:05 in the Board of Selectments Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application by RMJ LLC for a special permit to allow light industrial storage use in a business zone to be located at 0314 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. 02338. Said property is owned by RMJ LLC of 3, Sugar Maple Lane, Westport, Connecticut, 06880, as shown on Assessor's Map 63 Lot 61638017, Page 0343. The applicant is seeking a special permit for light industrial storage use in a business zone in accordance to the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 167.7, Schedule Use Regulations, Summary Use Regulations. Area is owned commercial business, petition is number 982.
Somebody had to speak for it?
It's going to have a little show itself.
These are just photo members. To make the introduction and introduce this property, before this board before. So my name is Frederick McCarthy. I'm partner over here Chris Peterson with Vertical Fields Capital. We are a self-storage developer. But tonight, we're actually here as owner representatives for RMJ LLC. So we would not be acquiring the property from RMJ. We would just be contracted to build the property for them as developer. They would stay on as owner. With us tonight is also Larry Silver from Silva Engineering. He's the civil engineer on the project. So, as was written into the record, the property is currently owned business, which does allow for self-storage as, you know, due to a special permit. So we are here this evening asking for that special permit for self-storage. So the owner has identified self-storage as a product that's in demand for the market, that this would be a good service for the citizens of Halifax. In addition, self-storage is usually considered a good neighborhood. On the one hand, it increases your property tax rolls, but it does not increase your school enrollment. The, you know, the use of traffic on the roads is very light, and it's typically a quiet neighborhood. So we know back in 2020... Sorry. The applicant had submitted an application for 40B affordable housing. The application has been withdrawn with prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Sorry, prejudice. Correct. And back in 2021, about the same time, there was another group that was potentially looking at buying the property from RMJ to develop self-storage. So we've gone back and we looked through all of those meeting notes and basically understand that it seems that the reason that the... That project was denied, or at least not approved, was not so much the use, but really the location of the building from the street, the size of the building, and the aesthetic of the building. So we've gone back and we worked with the engineers and the architects to basically redesign the project. And if you see on page 2, I don't know, Larry, if I can borrow your chalk. It's not exactly the same picture as page 2, but you'll see in comments back in 2021, some of the issues were the fact that that building was proposed is only 50 feet from Plymouth Street. In this case, the first building is over 400 feet back from the... From the street, and the other buildings are even further away. The second objection back in 2021 was that it was going to be a 60,000 square foot, 2.5 square building, right on Plymouth Street. So in this case, we redesigned it where it's actually going to be eight buildings, seven of which are only one-story. The largest of those one-story buildings is 5,400 square feet. So it's seven relatively small buildings. One larger building at 18,000 square feet, that will be two stories. We're going for the planning board on Thursday evening to ask for a variance on the size of that. So that, that basically would be addressing the size of the building in regard to the massing on Plymouth Street. The third issue is the fact that apparently the building was designed lots of glass and was not keeping to the aesthetic of downtown Halifax. So in this case, you can see it kind of on some of the... I think it's page 8, some of the larger pronouns you have. We're actually going to make these buildings, especially the three that face Plymouth Street, they will be in kind of the classic New England red barns buildings. And even though the building will be metal and not wood, the way the metal panels are, it looks like a kind of a classic boarding mat. And then finally, and this was on page 7, that cardboard that I handed out, given the fact that we have the... The auto parts store and some other structures here, and the fact that the buildings are 400 plus feet off of Plymouth Street, the view from the street is actually relatively obscured of the existing structures, plus the new landscaping of buildings and shrubs that we... Trees and shrubs that we will leave. So that's kind of a quick overview of the prime development.
All right. There was one other issue that we brought up, and that's the traffic light. I think I read earlier that you are... The entrance is going to be the same as the existing stop-and-shop traffic light?
That is correct.
So you're moving the... Before, you had the island or the entrance coming in to the left, and you're going to add a traffic signal there, which was crazy. You're moving it to the right, so it lines up so that when it comes out, the light comes on, makes the lead look...
Correct. And the entrance ways, you can see here, will actually be two lanes in and two lanes out. Even though self-storage is a very low use in terms of traffic, that way at least you're not getting cars stacked in Plymouth. If there's any stacking, it will be in the entrance.
There was also some concerns about water. I know that the neighbors have all kinds of concerns that they've had water damage or they've had runoff into their land, and this is going to be taken care of.
I guess I'll be addressing.
Okay.
Do you want to address that now?
Yeah, that's fine. The one... The other point that I want to bring up was that the land... This is... This is the site here where the... The other proposal for the storage was located on this one. In creating this driveway in here, there will be a shared entrance opposite the light. So when these folks come to you in the future with the commercial use of the property, it would be using a driveway easement that would be given from this property to the elements for helping to make sure that this works well in the intersection itself. As far as on the drainage part of it, I learned a lot during that 40B process in terms of drainage and a few other things, too.
So then wait.
I got some scots. I want to see those scots. But one of the things was that I became very friendly with Mrs. Alger, okay? I love her dearly, and she brought to my attention a lot of the issues as it related to drainage. And basically, what we've done is formulated our drainage design based on making sure that not only did we not make her a problem any worse, but actually made it better, okay, as far as improvements. So as you can see, we have a large detention basin proposed here, and that is in order to be able to handle the water that comes from the entrance road itself. And also, there is a pipe that comes across from the Tenolo property here that comes across and goes across into an existing ditch that then follows its way through the Alger property. So this detention basin is actually almost twice as large as what we had on the 40B project in order to make sure that we were able to even reduce the amount of water that heads in that direction. And we also have improvements on the Alger property in order to basically capture pipe and basically take that water out from that area and bring it into the golf course. Because the one kind of use that likes water is a golf course, okay? So, so the improvements on this, the drainage for this part, are finding its way through this detention basin. It's throttled, it's slowed down, it's stored temporarily, then it's discharged, comes in through here. The improvements in here is going to improve what's happening on the Alger property, and then the water would continue through out to the golf course. The discharge is sort of in this area here now, but we're going to take it across into the golf course so we can take it down into one to the pond that's in this area here. The majority of the drainage, which is related to the actual storage buildings, well, doesn't go in that direction, and it's not proposed to go in the direction that goes through the Alger property. That water is all being collected and brought down, and it's being discharged out to detention basin. Then it goes down and ultimately discharges down into the golf course also in order to provide additional water for their ponds. So it's a win-win in this... In the sense that you got to use its way in the back here. It's benign as far as impacting the character of the neighborhood, which is one of the criteria, is to have it be in keeping with the existing and future character of the area. You also take care of drainage issues that have been in existence here for a while, and we're able to make this happen. And basically, you have a use that's also, as was stated, that it's not really big demand on the town. It's a win in terms of taxes, but there's not really a lot of use in terms of services. So all we're really asking for, and we understand that we have to get full detail design approved by the planning board and also Conservation Commission. So we both have... We have those two hurdles that make sure that those two are approved, the final design of everything. What we're really looking for from you folks is what the authority is that you have, and is that to say that you allow for that use to be in the area that we're showing. But that we still have that... The bar to jump over to make sure that we get it to the point where we satisfy how it's done, that we meet all the criteria that are put in front of us by the consultants for the... For the commission and for the planning board. So with that, I don't know, did you want to add anything else? So the only other thing I did want to say was is that when you're looking at your special permit criteria, one of the big criteria was that, and I mentioned it, was not to be detrimental to the existing character or future character of the neighborhood. And I only think that it does. I think we actually enhance it in that sense. Traffic circulation will be minimal and controlled by the existing traffic light, and the shared entrance will be with the neighboring site is a real benefit to the town so that you don't have other curb cuts that are going to be a problem. And that what we're asking for is that, is that the request that the use be allowed with the contingency that the site plan and drainage are approved by the planning board and Conservation Commission in a... With the detailed site plan.
Anybody have any questions? It's unusual for us to approve anything until we get the site plan reviewed from the planning board. It just... We just don't do that. Because if they make changes, then you have to come back to us and we have to redo it again. So I mean, you're premature as far as coming to us. I know you want to get a sense of how this here looks, which we might be able to give you some of that feeling for it. It looks like you made a lot of changes that the other buildings certainly didn't go well. So I mean, in that respect, it's looking... It's looking a lot better. But we do not approve anything until the planning board gives us an okay on the site plan. And that's the same with the conservation. It has to go through them before it comes to us.
So you don't see a mechanism to be able to do it with that contingency that it has to satisfy the other permits? Because it does say in your bylaw that when you take... When the... When the board takes action, that it does not preclude the applicant from meeting all the other requirements of other boards in the town or other regulations in the town. And that's why we felt as though we could come for the use permit part of it. I did... This is very similar to one I did in Bridgewater. I don't know if you're familiar with the old walkover shoe building, which is behind where Crispy's restaurant is in the back, the big wooden one. And we brought that before the town in the same way. We brought it for the use variance first to make sure that they were okay with the use for it, and then we came back to them a few months later with the site plan design. And their contingency was that we had to basically with an approved site design. So basically, I don't think you put yourself at risk because you just make it contingent upon the fact that we have to satisfy those things. We don't satisfy Conservation and Planning Board, then you... Then you haven't really given us anything at that point. But I mean, that's the way we... That's the way we approached it, and that's why we're here before you. That's the reason.
I mean, it's... I know that that is the case, and a lot of people make that exact same argument to us, I think, all the time. And I think our viewpoint has always been that we want to approve the use after the Conservation Commission has looked at it and the planning board has approved the site plan, and then we can approve exactly what's already been approved for that use. And that's typically the pattern that we've gone in. Like, we're not required to do that, obviously, but it's typically the way we've done it in the past. Right? Not that we haven't had hearings at the same time.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. I mean, the fact that you've addressed a lot of the issues, and they were big issues, is a plus. And I'm sure that you feel the same way that the handling the water...
I haven't seen the plans yet, but Larry and Robbie said that they would take care of the water.
Well, see, I mean, that's... That's what we'd like to have. We'd like to have a... They got to see the plans, then make sure that she's happy, because if we go ahead and say, "Yeah," and she finds out that, "No, it's not," then it doesn't work well at all. And, you know, we can give you a contingency, but that doesn't work either. You know, we have to have everything approved before it comes to us, and then we say, "It's great," and we sign off on it.
Well, so what I would say to you is is that understanding the constraints that you guys have is that if we were able to continue this while we achieve that, in other words, so we leave this hearing open and have it as a continued hearing, the sense I'm hearing is that we've kind of addressed the issues that were an obstacle before. If there are things that we haven't, or there are things that we need to consider as we go through the rest of those approvals, that I'd like to hear those in this hearing so that we, you know, so that we're not missing something that you feel is important to us having an affirmative vote.
I have a question. So the drainage, you said, goes to the golf course. So are they... Do they...
Yeah. So my brother and I own the golf course. And so where it's going, both of those, the yellow one and the green one...
It's a good question, right?
It's going right into... There's a... Already water capture there. And we're trying to...
And they're always...
We're always looking for water. And we're always looking for water, because, of course, it's built on clay. But there's a... We can't see here, there's a very large pond here that this... This is a... Oh, actually, it's right there. And they're both... Both of these will feed into that, which then subsequently feeds our other retention pond. And then also adds up...
It's a live irrigation.
It all gives up too much water. It all goes down to the Totten River.
Yeah, we didn't want this one back here and say, "Hey, we didn't give..."
Trust me. The last thing we're going to complain about is having too much irrigation water.
And the one thing I failed to mention was during those 40B discussions, there was water health comment that came back, which talked about not being able to do a septic system on an easement on the adjacent property, which was the golf course property. The septic requirements of this is very small, and it allows for us to actually have the system, as you can see, that are two little... There's a septic and a reserve area right in this area on the property. We would basically be going from the office to a septic tank, pumping down to the small leaching field. Basically, there's very little flow.
No, the usage... The usage that you have in down there is much better than having housing down there. I mean, housing was a lot of problem. It was going to be tough to correct.
And that's what we felt, that this was the right direction and the right kind of use. You know, he still, you know, because the other proposal was withdrawn without prejudice, we really didn't want to go that direction, to go back to that, because it had a lot of obstacles.
Yeah.
Okay. He prefers this as an option because this is... It's a good, it's a quiet option. It's an option, I think, that works better for the town.
Yeah. I mean, the buildings look a lot better than me. They look more like they're architectural. I mean, agricultural storage facility out back, so I mean, that looks... That's great. Are all the buildings the same looking, or just...
The ones that face the street have the facade...
These three have the red, you know, kind of red barn look. These other ones in the back, which there's five of them, are basically... I think there's a picture on page 8. They'll be white corrugated metal.
But we're also, you know, my brother and I plan on doing things between the course, to the extent that we can get somebody there.
In long... In long term, they have the plant... The writings and so forth along this stretch, in order to also, you know, bump in the view from the course itself, too.
Yep. So you mentioned it in here, but I'm not seeing any measurements or anything between the buildings, so it looks like you're covered, or at least in here. I'm not seeing it... The one I see, the one map I see is a...
It's 25-foot aisles between the buildings.
Yep.
And on the end caps are either 30 to 35.
Okay. So you have 150 feet of continuous frontage?
Oh, yes. Oh, that was the other thing I did not mention, is that we...
I'm noticing there's a little outcut here, so I'm not... Different order?
There is a...
Okay, that's the one thing, I'm not seeing any measurements on that.
But we actually have gone before the planning board, and we created...
That's okay.
We created two lots. So when the application was made, we still had the other assessors reference, so there was a lot of different parcels that had to be identified. But this is what the current parcels are. This is Lot A and Lot B. Basically, it was a reconfiguration of it. There's 151 feet of frontage, meets the requirements, signed by the... Signed by the planning board, endorsed by the planning board for the reconfiguration of the lots.
And they're all deeded lots?
Those... Well, he has to create the deeds to separate them, but they're all still owned by RMJ. The whole thing is owned by RMJ.
But those... So we... And it's not your petition, it's many petitions, but those are lots not that you've drawn on a paper, but those are filed with the registered deeds.
The registry deeds, yes, they are. Yes, they are.
I think that's a valid question.
Recording information is right here. It's been recorded.
And the setbacks, like clearly have the frontage and clearly have the front setback. The sides and the rears are 30 and 40, would you say, on here?
Yeah.
From each of the buildings, okay. The two questions, I guess I have just... I think from my perspective, I appreciate... You guys have clearly been like... We didn't... I think voted on that storage facility in the first place. I think we just had that hearing.
We just had that one hearing.
And that wasn't us, but I don't know if you... That wasn't...
No, but like, clearly you guys have listened to that and incorporated all of that stuff.
Understanding where that went was a good idea of understanding where you folks...
No, and I think... I think that is... I appreciate that, that like you paid attention and tried to incorporate that stuff. The two questions I guess I would have is access to that back lot. I don't know, like, a lot of storage facilities will have a gate or something that you have access to. I just worry a little bit about the two things, which are pretty minor, considering... And looking at this for the first 20 minutes I've looked at it, is lighting back there? And if in their backyard, they're going to have a ton of lighting over those buildings? And then whether or not people are going to be able to access that, like at 2:00 in the morning, if they're going to be able to park back there behind those buildings? And if that's going to be shut off at all? I don't know if you guys have thought about that?
First thing is, we actually are doing the dark sky. We've got a four-dimensional plan that I didn't hand those out because it's so evident here. Okay. So there's actually a dark sky plan that's been put together to obviously keep the lighting down, not only for human neighbors, but for animal neighbors as well. And in regard to access, you know, some storage facilities allow 24-hour access, but most of them, they have basically two different things. They have office hours and access hours. So office hours is when there's an employee of the storage company that's on-site. Those hours typically are 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the afternoon, Monday through Saturday, and then on Sunday, there might be 3 to... You know, sorry, noon to 4:00, something like that. Those are office hours. Then there's access hours. So in this case, with the, you know, to your point, with the gate, you put the code in and it opens up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That would probably be like 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. So if we didn't allow for 24-hour access, there wouldn't be people parking back here at 2:00 in the morning.
So is that part of the plan, is to have some sort of limited time for access?
Yes. Most people don't go to their storage at 2:00 in the morning.
Yeah, and that's... I agree, and that's why I'm asking, because I like...
So no Patriots, storage potties?
Yeah, right.
That was just in the Globe on Sunday, where...
Really?
Yeah. That's the new thing. They have in their...
Tailgates?
Tailgating at the storage facility.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
That's time.
It's gone big.
That should be a condition that says...
That's right.
And there isn't gonna be an apartment, or I know some of them have an apartment.
So they're all residential, so they're the managers.
Couple of questions. First one being, is there any reason why all eight buildings can't be of the barn look, where it's in the center of our town? As in, past, like with Wal-Mart and Muck Donkey, requested, you know, that the outside facade be more within the character? Is there any reason why it's just three and all eight can't be the barn type, or like we would...
The reason, the reason we chose that is obviously because, you know, cost benefit, right? Obviously, we're living in times of unprecedented inflation, we've been experiencing inflation, construction materials, construction labor ever since 2020. So really, it's a trade-off, because the red barn look costs more, is more expensive than the white. So the fact that these three buildings, which are these three, are the ones that are seen by Plymouth, and these other ones are not, they're, you know, as Rob was saying, this backs up into the golf course here, there's gonna be all trees and primitive bushes around there, so they're not really being seen any, by anyone from the street, or the golf course, or the sides, and they're really only being seen by customers. And so that was the idea, was really just from a cost benefit analysis, given what's going on in construction.
Again, this is in the center of our town. And my second question would be, with eight buildings being set so far back, are there fire restrictions, a fire hydrant? Is this, are these buildings gonna require a sprinkler system? Or if there was a fire or something way back there, you know, I would think that the fire chief would have to definitely sign off, or at least take a look at the, at the number of buildings and what could be a problem back there, regardless of whether there was a problem. With the 25-foot space between the eight existing buildings, is that an issue for a fire truck or something to get through there?
Probably two, the radius is for them turning around.
We have to show, as part of when we're doing the site plan...
I'm sure you will.
Just as we did on the 40B, we have to show the fire department that their access is viable, and we have to show that we have sufficient water into the project to be able to handle exactly that. So his points are very well taken, they will be addressed as we satisfy the fire department.
With the panel?
Whether or not they need an insular hydrant up somewhere near the office area, whether or not they just need to have the line in there, whether or not they need something looped, well, it's all, this all gonna come up when we, when we discuss that part of it. In the 40B discussions, there were a number of items that came out that we, we had discussions with the fire department, and the water department, so, yeah, we have to satisfy, satisfy this.
Yes.
The eight buildings, are they all storage? And how many units of storage are there?
They are all storage.
No retail?
Well, so in the, what we call retail is, is the front office, where they sell, you know, boxes and tape and shit like that, they're not selling stuff that you'd find at Cumberland Farms or any other kind of stuff, so it's retail specific for storage, and it's a relatively small footprint in the office.
And they're, eight buildings are all storage?
Yes.
And how many storage units per building?
It varies.
Where's the tall one on storage though?
It's somewhere around 400, but the...
400 units.
400 units. 400 units.
Are they garage-type, like a garage-type?
So, sorry, Chris, but the larger building on the left is a two-story climate control building.
With a single, with a single loading area here.
Single loading area. The actual unit mix, we've talked of extra space storage as the branding and manager of this facility, has given us some guidance as to unit mix, so they'll be anything from five, as small as 5x5s, to as large as 20x2s. We haven't set it on a final unit mix, because we're still kind of going through the overall site planning. But there's about 40,000 square feet, 49,000, excuse me, 49,000 square feet of gross area throughout the eight buildings. So that's about 400, that's roughly 100, on average, per unit. So that's the map that I'm using, that could fluctuate up or down slightly. But in this neck of the woods, you generally have folks storing much larger equipment and things like that, so we didn't go for a city where your average unit size would be much smaller, you'd be doing much more 5x5s. So it's actually a good balance for the community.
Would it store something that sounds of like a boat or a camper, or like what, how big at least?
No, they're not gonna be that large, no.
Another question. So down on 106 towards Bridgewater, they allow the storage around the outside, so like, I know Orchard Circle and Highland, you can't have a boat and you drive, or you can't have a camper, so they have that. So are we gonna have storage of that kind outside?
No.
We won't be able to see it anywhere.
We won't even, so we have 20 parking spaces on the site that are parking spaces for customers, not for people who are storing their, you know, 1938 St. Baker.
The aesthetic's important, obviously, to Joey and I, because theoretically, we're running 200 customers through the back of it all day, so we don't, you know, if there's broken boats and, you know, cars with no engine sitting there, it doesn't help us either. We're trying, we're trying as hard as we can to maintain the integrity of the area of landscape, so that it's both good from the golf course and good from the street.
So marketing-wise, what is it that people are looking to, no offense, we've never had a storage thing here, so what are people so desperate to store that would need so much space? I'm just wondering, because we only have a place in Bridgewater and down here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the end, so I always say that there's 400 units, there's 400 different reasons that people store. But in generally, you have about 70% of your customers as, as, you know, households, and 30% of your customers is business. So in the household stuff, a lot of what drives self-storage is life events. So it's moving, it's home improvement projects, it's death, it's divorce, it's kids going away or coming back from college, it's all these types of things. For business, which is, you have the 30%, a lot of it is, there might be a lot of document storage for doctors, dentists, lawyers, accountants, et cetera, people that are required by law to maintain paper records for a certain amount of time. You might have different businesses that are either increasing or decreasing inventory, or their amount of fixtures, so you can, you know, imagine back during the pandemic, when half the restaurants took out half of their tables and chairs, those all ended up in self-storage. Right? When people were moving across the country, doing home improvement projects, all that stuff was driving demand for self-storage. So nationally, there's been a large demand for self-storage in, you know, in both ways as well.
But you gentlemen, sorry, you guys aren't running the storage company, it's not your business, you're just...
Correct.
Planning the property and you're leasing or selling it to another company to do that.
So Extra Space Storage is a publicly traded company, they're the third largest owner and operator of self-storage in the country. Everybody's seen public storage, maybe you've seen Cube Smart. Extra Space is one of the three companies that's public that also will manage, on a third-party basis, a property for an owner. So you have access to, you know, lots of different things, frankly, but like, certainly their expertise in running it and running it professionally. And amongst those three, Extra Space is really considered kind of, if you can have a Cadillac of self-storage, they're really considered the higher end of self-storage in terms of how they maintain their property, and frankly, the standards from the get-go.
I mean, I can, I just personally can say that I actually did a lot of mini-storages in the 1980s, and they were for Extra Space. And I know the two principals from Utah personally, and they are, they are really upstanding people, they run a great business. And in the beginning, they used to develop them and sell them, and then they began holding them and operating, so they switched to long-term investments. In the beginning, they used to settle up places like public storage and so forth. And I did a lot of them for them across the country, and I know that they're a very, very good operating system, as far as company.
And just for metrics, so they own about 2,000 self, they have about 2,000 self-storage facilities in the United States, of which they own about 1,400, and 600 are managed by a third party. So in this case, RMJ would be a third party, they would stay as the owners, but they wouldn't necessarily run it on a day-to-day basis, it would be branded and run on a day-to-day basis by Extra Space.
Okay, now on this other urgent care retail buildings for Lot B, are these the units that were supposed to go, it's there with 592 Plymouth Street?
We don't know, we, we, this is not about...
They're not ours, like, we sold...
But they're on the street, they're on the same, the same shared street that the storage units will be on.
They will have an easement for access, but the details of their design and so forth is being, that's being handled by a different civil engineering company, a different architect. We can't really speak to that. I do know that they're, they seem to be very reputable, but we haven't seen the details of that, and I really wouldn't, I wouldn't feel right...
No, it's just part of this package, so I'm just asking, it says it would be on this Lot B. He's saying it's on the left-hand side, going down the road.
We wanted to make sure that you understood how the access happens, it's gonna be like...
The access provides a mutual access at that point.
What we attempted to do essentially is make sure that there was not gonna be any stacking coming into the site as a result of two different uses, right? So you don't want cars on the street wanting to sell. It really maybe was too much information, but that's not part of this application.
Okay, okay. And what if the town shoots down that part?
It shouldn't affect this.
It will, it's larger.
No, the one does not...
I don't want it to look like a convenient MD, like, in camera, or in your face when you get on the highway.
So which one, the self-storage or the...
No, the urgent care.
Yeah, that slice, they're, they're handling, they're gonna do all the application and all that.
And they have the self-storage.
Yeah.
Separation, completely, yeah. What is the height of the second, the two-story building out back?
Sorry, what was the question?
Height of the, height of the climate control.
Yeah, 30 feet 10 at the, I'm sorry, at the ridge.
Okay. Now, is that gonna look completely like a barn?
Yeah, well, so...
Front and back?
We're doing a relatively low slope, just probably the building height is low impact as possible, so I think it's like 3 over 12. Don't quote me on that, that's a hard question, but rather than a much steeper, what you would see in a barn, but ultimately, yes. The only other distinction from a barn are, we currently have coins on two quarters that have glass inserted into them, so I think if you look at...
Yeah, I did, I saw it, yeah.
You'll see the elevation of the two-story. What, what are the courses, I think?
Yeah, okay.
Part of that is for security, also for people inside, so they feel comfortable when they're inside of the room.
Okay. I mean, a lot of these questions, it can be brought up the planning board anyhow.
No, these are good.
It's a good to get you into what we're looking at, you know?
Insofar as that design element is something that's a concern, again, it's better that we have as much information from the neighbors and from you all, so when we embark on the expensive journey of doing a full site plan, we can kind of come back with a relatively good package. That's our interest, I hope it's yours, too.
What's the timeline?
Well, depends on this, but...
Well, how long of a project is that, exactly, two and a half, is that gonna take nine months?
Oh, in terms of construction, probably 12 months. Anywhere from 12 to 15, there's a lot of site work that needs to be done. So I would basically say 12 to 15, but it should not impact the community in terms of like, construction closures and things like that. Well, yeah, we've got a lot of land that we can store stuff on, and so it should not hurt...
And the golf course.
And the golf, and the golf course, yeah. That whole, that pesky hole.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
So that if I understand correctly, then the applicants would have any problem with putting a restriction on outside storage for vehicles in flammable combustible engines, fuels, that type of thing?
It's, it sounds like that's what their intent is.
And, by the way, the leases that we have always restrict those flammable explosive items, I mean, that's very...
I mean, there was nothing that said, like, about the storage area, the people waiting in the East Bridgewater, allowing outside storage, but all of a sudden, boom, there's so many boats and trucks and everything, so it, it is in the center of our town, I think that's the biggest concern, what it looks like and what's gonna appeal, and I, I think that's an important issue.
Sure is, yeah.
Yeah, Joey and I care more about what it looks like as well than ever, because it's really, it's like, the thing we care most of all is the course, and we're always gonna try to protect that, no one wants to stare at it.
I don't wanna hit my golf ball off a boat.
That's where it goes out.
They do give lessons, too.
I'll take a brick, maybe a shank off a boat and do that.
Any other questions? No? Can I have a motion to push this off to next month?
I'll make a motion to continue, what's our next meeting, November...
Do you wanna do the onsite or...
Well, I think it's too, too early to do an onsite, yeah, we can...
Um, the next meeting is...
November 7th?
November, the second Monday.
14?
We probably should go to December.
December, that's fine.
We need, we're gonna need the time to do that.
Okay.
Could be more than one, two months.
I'm sure, yeah. The 12th?
December 12th.
Yeah, 12th, yeah. So I'll make a motion to continue petition number 982 to December 12th at 7:05, 7 o'clock, 7:00.
Second?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay.
100%.
300.
I'm stunned.
Well, someone about to ask you what's going on down there.
Sorry.
Okay. Well, yeah, we'll do it. I mean, we're, we're...
Yeah.
Why can't I figure this out?
It's always a test.
It seems right, is that in there? Good to see ya. Thanks, tell everybody you know. Back in the settings. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 12th at 7:00 PM in the Board of Selectments Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, Halifax Mass, on the application of Gasan Tanous and Carol Dowd for a special permit and variance to raise and rebuild a single-family home located at 20 Home Street, Halifax. Said property is owned by Gasan Tanous, I think I'm saying that right, and Carol Dowd of 225 Jean Carroll Road, Abington, Mass. On, as shown on the assessor's map, 65 Lot 4, Book 53326, Page 307. The advocates are seeking a special permit to raise the existing structure and rebuild a single-family dwelling which would constitute an extension of a non-conforming use in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 167-8C. This project would also be in violation of the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 167-11, Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, requiring a variance of the side setback from 30 feet to 8 feet. Area is zone residential, and it is petition number 977.
Will you go on the inside inspection?
Yes.
What did we find out?
It's pretty much what they said. It's funny, when you look at the drawing and you see that pond there, saying, can we move this here, can we move that there? But you can't. The topography of the land is exactly the way they explained it. We went through everything down here to see if there was any, any way we could move it to a different location, but it seems like they've got the right spot. And that's the original people that built it there, had the right, right idea. So I don't see a problem as far as the land itself.
Did you straighten up the conservation issue with the conservation?
No, it was us. Not our property.
Yeah, we brought that up, because I saw all the trees down. But when you drive in, you have to keep on driving through that road until you get down to this nice little corner that they're stuck in.
She don't do her homework correctly.
He had an arborist come down, and they decided what trees were coming down, and a lot of them came down, and he wasn't happy either, but he's gonna wind up planting more trees there. But it wasn't their issue. But when you drive in, you have to keep on driving through that road until you get down to this nice little corner that they're stuck in.
She don't do her homework correct.
He had an arborist come down and, uh, they decided what, what trees were coming down and a lot of them came down and he wasn't happy either, but he's going to wind up planting more trees there. But it wasn't their issue. But I think, Mooney, you were there too? And you had the questions?
I think that's the best location. The other location we questioned, it's a hill.
Hill.
A hill. It's, it's in the best location. Can't move it away from the water anymore because of the big embankment.
Now, the, the issue with the deck before it was overhanging in the water? The old deck? Before it was?
Before it was too, a little bit.
It was right on it.
Right on it.
Yeah.
But now, because they're going to put eight feet.
It's going to be further away from the water.
Further away from the water.
We're just asking the question so we won't get in trouble later on.
No, I can't now jump to the water flow.
Any other questions on the board?
Sounds, it sounds exactly like it was drawn up, so.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve petition number nine seven seven. Uh, as stated. Any, any restrictions, any? Uh, no, the, the, the variances that they're looking for as far as reducing the, uh, the footage is, is fine.
You second it?
Yes.
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 Myself is yes. It passes.
Thank you.
We'll be coming there to swim.
Can we store that stuff in the storage place?
Yeah. You do, you can come, no.
Everyone's invited. Everybody's invited.
That's why we put that in the water, I tell you.
I want to see the running sun into the water.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Next chair is nine seventy-seven. Twenty Home Street.
It was nine seventy-seven.
Yeah, nine seventy-seven.
It's nine seventy-eight.
Nine seventy-eight, sorry.
That's all right. Oh, we got to sign the thing, yeah. The next one. Uh, the Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, September twelfth at seven oh five at the Board of Selectments Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall. On the application by Brunasors de Costa for a special permit for a two-family home located at twenty-two and twenty-two A Colby Drive Halifax. Said property is owned by Brunasors de Costa of twenty-two and twenty-two A Colby Drive Halifax, as shown on Assessor's Map thirty-four lot seventy-seven, book five four eight nine two, page one thirty-eight. The applicant is seeking a special permit to turn an existing in-law apartment into a two-family home for rent. The existing in-law was built predating the Halifax zoning bylaw section one sixty-seven seven D twelve scheduled use regulation, specific use regulations. In-law apartment, immediate family member accessory apartment with a separate entrance, gas, electric, and septic. The applicant is not requesting any changes to be made to the apartment. The area is own residential and it is petition number nine seventy-eight.
Okay, again, I made the walkthrough on the twenty-fourth on the Saturday. Uh, I went inside, I looked at the, there's, there was absolutely no entrance on the basement or second floor.
There's separate entrances.
Separate entrances, the electric is separate. Everything they mentioned was separate, the septic system is separate. It's, uh, it's exactly the way they described it.
Now, what do you, what do you guys think about the water? Should that be separate or shared?
I think, no, the water, I think, I look at a three-family house, you have one water line coming in and goes up and feeds three different people.
What about, you know, having a separate meter for the water?
Um, I mean, that's something they could probably do.
Let's say they, they sell the house, they sell one section of that house or they have to.
That's true, that becomes, you know, who pays the water bill?
Right, right, and then it becomes, it becomes on the town.
Well, they can't sell one section of it.
Yeah, you can't do that, I mean, the owner of the property.
We're just thinking, uh, so nothing happens, they come back at us.
We're looking at the future, I mean, the owner, the owner of the property is probably responsible for the, the water or all the issues for town. Yeah, so if you have two, two apartments, the owner is still responsible for the water. Usually that's included, it's part of their rent.
Yeah. There'll be a name on it.
Yeah, there wouldn't be a name on it somewhere, yeah. No, they've done everything right, I can't, you know, they're probably the first people that have, that have come aboard, in front of the board and said, I want to make it a two-family. And not have, have neighbors call or find out if it's a two-family afterwards. So, I mean, do go ahead.
And that was, as we talked last time, uh, the intention is not to leave the house because Brunna lives with her parents there. And the neighbors is, it's a family that's living in the, in the in-law. So, uh, Brunna, she has like, she's twenty-five, so I don't know, she's going to, we don't know because you're, you're dating yet. But we don't know if they're going to live there forever, but the idea is to leave the house for the parents, they're going to continually live there. Then we can find us a separate place, but that's not something that we're looking to do right now. I, I cannot say that we're never going to move, move out from the house, but that's the plan for the.
A future, something in the future.
Yeah, she's just twenty-five, I can promise you.
So it's actually probably easier to sell it as a two-family than an in-law because of the way Halifax makes you renew the in-law. So for a resale possibility, it's probably better that you do it that way.
We also don't want to make, make it set a precedent that when people come here to have, uh, you know, have an in-law apartment, I want to make it into a, into a two-family. We don't, we don't want to create that problem for us. And this is a unique situation that we're only doing this because it was already been a two-family from, from the beginning.
Predated, yeah.
It predated, and.
Has it?
No, it was not.
They haven't been renting it out, it's been an in-law forever, right?
It was an in-law, but we don't want to have an in-law.
They built it incorrectly, there's no question about that.
We don't want an in-law to come in and all of a sudden say, hey, I want a two-family.
Yeah, like I, I guess my, my, my two concerns, I guess, I'm a little hesitant about this for, for two reasons. The first is the, the special permit's going to transfer with the property. So if, like, they, they can, they can move out and rent that house and, and rent it to two separate people, I guess, but the, um, later down the line, their plans don't necessarily matter. They could move there tomorrow, whatever you say here, you all have to stick to. Um, that concerns me. I also don't know if that neighborhood is, there's anything else. I, I appreciate, like, I drove through there and I, I know that Jim said last time, and it seems the case that you don't necessarily, it doesn't look out of character. Uh, but the use might be out of character for that neighborhood. So I guess I, like, I'm hesitant to, to do this a little bit because I don't know, um, if it's within the character of the established neighborhood. I also don't know if it's going to set a little bit of an, open, open a window here where more people are going to come and ask the same thing. Um, so I'm not, I'm not entirely sold on it, I think everything that, that, I think everything that the current owners are doing is the right that. And I think that they, their intentions are great, and I think they're going to be great neighbors to whoever, you know, lives next door across the street. Um, but as we all know, like, that stuff comes back twenty years to, to the town and it's not always pretty, so. Um, I don't know if they're here to speak to that or anybody else has any insight.
I have a question. So when you said out of character for the neighborhood, what that can tell because?
There's no, there's no law like it.
That house looked like a single-family, so is it, is it our winters, that's what?
No, I, I guess that, so the intent of the bylaw is to not have that happen anywhere.
Okay.
Right? Um, and the part of what we look at from the state legal standpoint of what a special permit should be, is whether or not granting a special permit is outside the established character of the, the established neighborhood. And so I guess what I'm not sure about, and we haven't really, we, I brought it up and I think we talked a little bit about it, and we talked about it from an aesthetic point of view. Like, it, it doesn't look like, which is almost worse.
Yeah, because it doesn't change.
If it looked like a multifamily, I think that's worse, but I think the, the, um, like, I don't know if that's a neighborhood where that use exists anywhere else. I don't, and I don't know, I don't know if you guys know.
So this space was always an in-law?
Yeah.
Now they're asking just to rent it out?
Yeah, what it sounds like to me is that it was, it was not built the way in-laws are supposed to be built. So it's supposed to be shared living space and all that, all that junk, and they didn't really build it that way. But what it sounds like is it's always been used as an in-law. It has not been used as an income-producing apartment.
No, it has, you know, it has two septic systems, it has.
Yes, everything.
Everything, everything is separate other than the water and.
Yeah.
How old is the home?
What's that?
How old is the home?
Eighties, ninety?
Eighty-six or something.
Eighty, in the eighties.
How many other two-family homes do we have in our class?
I mean, the other two-family homes that we have, they're on one oh six.
They're duplexes, yeah.
They're duplexes.
There's duplexes over on one oh six and I think some multifamily, there's multifamily over by like Mia's.
Yeah.
Um, outside of that, I don't think.
But they're more business district.
Yeah, those, no, and that's, that's a different established character of a neighborhood, right?
But again, I'm just being there with that, okay, so they could wait it to people that we don't even know, so they could.
Not if we don't approve the special permit.
No, no, what I mean, what I meant, they could continue waiting it to people that we don't even know that they are waiting it to, we make that, right? So it sounds to me like when I'm seeing the house, it's two different houses. I don't think it will make it different, so if someone went in and the owners live in one side and they want to know, if owners were not in the property, I would say, okay, it will be a different things because you went in from left to right. If they choose to live in one, one of the houses and win the other one, at least they will have the capacity to oversee the property and do what they need to do.
But if you make it a two-family, nothing guarantees the owner to live there.
You can't require somebody to live there.
What gives them, you know, what gives them the, the, the ten years down the line or five years down the line? The guy decides to sell the house to somebody else and it's still a two-family. He's selling it to a two-family, to, as a two-family. But there is no two-family on that street other than that one, it was an in-law apartment. Now it's going to be changed from an in-law to a two-family. And that's kind of like, you, we pass it and it sets a precedent, everybody that has in-law apartments would want to do that, come in in front of the board and.
And that's always been, I think Halifax' big thing is not allowing.
And that, that's been very consistent.
Diligent about not letting people rent those in-laws and making sure they're joint spaces.
And, and I agree with your mindset, like, I don't, I don't think this is the end of the world if they're living there and they're renting out that apartment. But I can also say, like, we don't get to tell people, like, if, if they wanted to rent out their house, they could do that. Anybody in any part of town can rent their house to someone. We can't tell them that they can't do that. But we, what we, the only, the only authority I think that the zoning board has is whether or not you can say that they can rent, like, allow them to rent an apartment as an income-producing apartment.
And we can't even put a restrictions on, you can't sell that house either.
Right, right.
You can't do that, you know?
Oh, they put a restriction, they cannot sell it as a two-family.
Right.
They'll be voting no, right.
When you, when you pass it as a two-family, then it's already a two-family, you know?
No, you, no, we would not, I, I think that is absolutely wrong. I don't think we can tell, I think, I don't think we can grant a special permit and then tell them they can't. I don't thi, no, the special permits by law stay with the deed.
I mean, I look at the, the cost to turn a, an in-law apartment into a a two-family, so it's rentable, would be very expensive. In a lot of cases, you probably can't even do it because there's probably not enough land for the septic, septic system in. You've got to put septic utilities in, you've got to block up the emphasis going into the home. It, uh, it, to me, it doesn't sound cost-effective to do that.
But this is a unique situation.
This is, no, this is unique, but what I'm talking about, other people in the future.
Because they need a permit from you guys.
Yeah, I mean, most of the, uh, most of the in-law apartments that we, we, we look at there.
There's only on one.
Nine hundred square feet, they're, they're small as far as that goes. And the expense to try and turn that, and, and by putting that, that one addition on, it cuts off the land that you need for a septic system. Uh, you know, it's, I think it's going to be rare. If someone going to try, of course, there's going to be people going to try. There's never going to stop people trying to do that.
No, I don't think it does.
Any way we can put a condition on it to, to keep it the way it is and not have any, you know, if anybody comes in with a, uh, in-law apartment, there's a condition that you can never turn it into a two-family?
What, somebody coming in for an in-law?
You have an in-law.
Yeah.
They don't, they can't come in front of us and say, well, I want to do this. An in-law is an in-law, that's it. They can't turn it, they, they can't come in front of the board and say.
They could, they.
They could, but we, you know, you know, we can deny.
Yeah, you can deny it.
There's no requirement, to be honest, there's, there's no, so there are requirements for in-laws to have those shared utilities. There's actually no requirement for a multifamily to have separate utilities. Uh, so they, a, any, any in-law right now could come up here and make the same argument that they want to have an income-producing apartment and they want a special permit to do that. They wouldn't have to put a door in, they wouldn't have to separate the utilities, they could keep it exactly the way it is now and come and ask us for that. I mean, I, I, I think to Jerry's point, we'd be way less inclined to say yes.
Right.
Um, but I still, I still, like, I still don't. It, the, to, to your point, like, I think the intent of the bylaw has been really clear. And the, and I think the, the fact that we have very few of these in town and only on main roads in certain areas kind of speaks to that.
I just want to start, I just want to make sure you guys, I had, uh, a new, I found my mail from Tomiis, um, from two thousand and eight.
Look at you. Look at you.
Yep.
You're digging back into the files.
Just, I just want to make sure you guys.
How about that property?
So basically, the in-law was there, but they didn't have a special permit, but it wasn't occupied, so they didn't care. Right? Is that what he said?
That's what he said.
Which is, that's what it kind of sounds like. That's just back in the seventies and eights. Are there other in-laws on that street?
I think so. Like Amy, Amy said there was one other.
Yeah, she did say that, yeah.
Yeah, but there's no other duplexes.
No, that's, I mean, yeah.
Can't words, it's a little scary, open.
But, and this is, this is what we get nailed on, all this, and, and like, this is the problem with the, like, they, they seem like very good people who are trying to do the right thing and do wonderful things, but like, then the bylaws are the issue.
Yes, I mean, each times that come in front of us, we see with a different view.
Did he?
Each, um, person that come for a guy and so for a tenant, we consider that with a different view.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't make a decision based on what was in front of us and everyone has a different, uh, they see.
Different situation.
Yeah, different situation, so.
And because the house is already a two-family, it's built as a two-family, that's why we just want to make it as official.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Well, the way this, the way it looks to me is, again, we go back and we read this little note here. I mean, this here is, it could be anything.
I don't know, I don't know what that means, yeah, I know, I agree.
It was predating our own in-law apartment laws. I mean, it's a unique kind of a, a position.
Yeah, he basically said there's one there, they don't have a special permit, but it, it doesn't matter because it's not occupied, that's kind of what it's.
Same, yes, but it predated our laws.
Right.
Uh, I think the motion should have a, uh, condition. Each unit not be sold individually like, uh, Jim Perry mentioned.
Become a condo.
Yeah.
Yeah, and not come as a condo.
Not to be turned into a condo.
Yeah.
And be kept as a, as a two-family. And be sold as a two-family. And be kept as a, as a two-family and be sold as a two-family. Would you like to word that?
Hey, I'm trying to read that. What's the bylaw here? One sixty-seven seven two.
Any member of the audience wanna speak to this?
We spoke enough, didn't we? I just think if none of their neighbors are here, I guess they don't have an issue with the.
No, I mean, they, 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 they put it out there and they, they advertised it to everyone had a chance to come in and speak about it and, uh, no one is, uh, no one committed to say anything wrong about it.
Yeah, I think the house thirty-three, they sent a.
Oh, yeah, there was one lady that said it was fine. They had no problem with that.
If we lived in the house, they could have.
They probably won't care unless there's forty-five cars in the driveway with us, you know, if there's gonna be like a million people sharing, you know, the other side.
Yeah, the size of this place is not gonna happen.
Yeah.
We, we have had that in the past when the neighbors called and they brought it in and they, instead of letting us go down for the inspection, they, uh, they turned it back into what it was originally supposed to be. Yeah.
We have a few houses that has no cars. They have this, yeah.
Wanna sign the bills?
Alright, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, uh, petition number nine eight two, uh, to approve with the following condition, that will not be made into a condo, a condominium.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that motion.
Yes. Sorry.
She was over there with a baby.
Maybe.
Who's, who's left? I, I really, I wanna say yes, 'cause I think that, I think that these, the, the intent of the current owners are, are really good, and I think, I wanna give this to them, but I also know, like, we, like, if I've learned anything from being on this board in the last five years, it's that, you know, the the, the, you'll get called out on the, the legal part of this stuff, and I don't know, um, I don't know if it got challenged, if it would hold up, so I, I think I have to vote no.
Oh, well, yes.
So. Yes, it's.
Three to two. It failed. Sorry. No.
Three to two. You have to have, uh, majority, which would be four. So it's, it's still an in-law apartment, unfortunately at the time, but, uh, I know your family are still living there and, uh, Alex, there's good luck.
Is there something that we can do, like, for, so we can come back or something?
You can come back in two years and present your case again. Uh, it takes two years. If, once you get a refusal, uh, it takes two years for you to come back and, and ask for it again.
Well, they can appeal our decision, right?
Well, you can appeal our decision too, and then, uh, by appealing the decision, they'll come back to us and you'll make a motion again and then it'll be voted.
What, does it go to the planning board if they appeal our decision? Is that the case?
I think so.
Right?
I was just thinking, does it go to the planning board? I mean, it goes to the planning board, there's a substantial change in two years, but as far as, you know.
I think it would go to, I think you'd have to bring it to Land Court if that's the case.
Yeah. You're better off to come back in two years and present it.
And it doesn't, it doesn't stop the in-law use. That's, that continues.
Okay.
So that's fine.
You, you have family in it.
The only thing you don't have is a.
That's perfectly fine. That's perfectly acceptable. It's just, it's the income-producing apartment piece.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry about that, yep.
Anybody read the minutes for September twelve, twenty, twenty-two?
There's two bills or four bills?
You skipped over them.
Three in the, it's a list. Oh, yeah, and there's only two in there?
Yeah.
Alana, two bills or three?
Or maybe it's a both on the same one. Maybe that's it.
Three.
The house. Yeah, both on there. They get two bills on one.
Oh.
Yeah, that's right. She tricked you. Need a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, bills as presented in the agenda. How's that?
Second.
On the table?
Yes.
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 I'll go for the last petition.
Hmm? Oh, yeah. Things are going so swell today. Is that it? Nine seventy, what's that? No, crap. What have I done? This is a yes. This is a yes. We didn't, we, we're behind on forms here. This is yours. Oh! So we're gonna shred that. We're gonna read forms now. That's what we're gonna do. This is this one.
We just rip it right off.
Yeah, we just load it on there.
Keep it in your pocket and throw it out.
Exactly. Hello, camera. This piece of paper doesn't exist.
That's two petitions. The one, uh, the house and the in-law.
Anybody read the minutes for September twelve? Hmm?
I was not here, so I do not know if they.
Okay.
All right, isn't here pretty well? Make a motion to accept the minutes of September twelve, twenty twenty-two?
Second.
Yes.
On the table?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, we have other business zoning bylaws?
Uh, I attended the meeting, but there wasn't any meeting.
That's a good thing.
It was on the calendar and I says, okay, I'm gonna be there. I got here.
And there was nothing.
Uh, no meeting. I was the only one sitting there. I waited till about seven twenty.
Oh, no.
That was it, so I don't know when the next meeting's gonna be.
That's a bad sign.
Any other unscheduled business?
No, there is a new schedule. It's next Tuesday, I think.
I only checked.
I got an email. I did get an email.
I checked the, the.
Five ninety-two hasn't come in front of us yet.
Halifax calendar. They don't trust anything in there.
Yeah, that's 'cause the planning board sent us an email on their update.
When it comes, when it comes from the planning board, then I think the planning board will hear that one.
It was good. Told the job.
That was denied, at the last.
But they, they, we, we present it again. No, I don't think so, but they agree with our budget.
No, it was denied.
If one of us is missing, you count a law.
So the planning board sent you guys what they received, which is.
Yeah, it's just their site plans, right?
Yes, and so if you guys have any comments, it's, the plans were there, um, in the mail folder.
So they're the same plans as the last time? 'Cause we, we saw, huh?
Oh, boy.
They're pretty much the same plans, yeah, um.
So the planning board denied it not too long ago, so they don't have to wait two years?
No, that's, that's not, um, by law. They were speaking on that.
But they voted to reject because they never showed up for their meeting and we were all there. And they never showed up for their, for their time in front of the planning board, so they voted and said this was their time, they didn't show up. And Amy Trup brought up the fact that if they didn't make a decision that night to reject it, then the next meeting would be ninety days past and they would automatically get their plans, um, approved.
Yeah.
So they did vote to reject it. So as people who live across from there, we all believed it was gonna be another two years until they were able to come before the board. So no one understands why this is still going forward.
Because that is incorrect. There's no bylaw that states for a site plan denial that they're.
Yeah, it's a special permit denial, I think.
That's a special.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why.
If they were applying for a special permit and it was denied, they would have to wait for two years.
Like that, they'd have to wait for that, 'cause we sent it out as special.
Okay, well, special, just a special. So now they're still moving forward. So when are they in front of the, where, where are their plans? Can we find them anywhere?
They just must have resubmitted the same plans.
They're in front of the planning board Thursday.
Say what?
In front of the planning board Thursday, right?
This Thursday?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yes, um.
You can all. Ask him by October twenty-sixth.
No, this Thursday is front of the planning board.
It's not.
All that storage.
Yeah, it said they're asking for concerns by October twenty-sixth. They must be.
This is what the building is gonna look like. You wouldn't like to see it?
Well, that's, that's different.
You might have seen it before.
I can't get out of my street. I can't get out of my street as it is. I timed it. It was eight minutes the other day. If there's one more building across the road, we're never hit now.
Stony well, uh.
No, Clyde, you have to leave mult. You don't know every single person we delivered mult.
One of my issues was though, that, that they said based on the size, they didn't need to do a traffic study.
They have to do it.
'Cause I was gonna say, that's insane.
I mean, we, we haven't heard anything about this.
From like curtains, fuel, to pass the mobile, it's just, I mean, it's. I mean, I grew up in Quincy by the, the rotary by itself, by the highway, and getting out of my street was a nightmare. And my street now is starting to resemble that.
So I'm wondering now, because it was a bit to be a medical retail space. I'm urging Karen retail. It looks like they moved down next to, to, to Joey Barba, so what is going in here? Is this still considered retail?
From what I hear, office building in a retail.
Guys gotta have a bus, so.
Office building is upstairs.
Okay.
If you go to the, to the, uh, planning board being this Thursday, you'd probably find out more about than we do.
Now, this Thursday is about, it's a special time.
About what?
About the storage that we just.
So why did they wait? Why did they say that they weren't gonna be back yet? Um, okay.
That's a, that's a weird question.
'Cause that's.
'Cause they might need more than one.
The entrance for this here is strictly on Carter Street for cars to pull in.
Haven't they started last time?
No, no.
Well, I looked at the, I looked at the site plan. The site plan only shows a entrance.
No.
There's, there's a walkway to come in.
They're not gonna tear the house down.
No, the, the house is not being torn down.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Two separate parking areas with a grass. Okay, I think there's, I think there's only one now.
Now, there's, there's still the two.
Still two? Yeah, I think there is.
And then they're gonna put the drainage ditch right next to that house.
Yeah, I bet.
That's the, the retention. I don't even think he knows that. Right now, he's got a tree, like a natural fence of trees. Well, he's about to lose that.
Well, I'm sure that.
I mean, he's a builder himself. He should know, he should know again when it comes up.
You know, I've lived here a long, I've lived here a long time. This stuff that goes on, I have no idea, and I'm like, how the hell would that happen?
Yeah, we'll only get updates from now until we, they'll, yeah. So you don't need to come down. Well, and you know what I mean, why?
You can actually hear things here. I was just at the school committee meeting. You can't hear anything. I'm like, I don't understand why they have these meetings if no one can hear anything. We're all just shaking our heads.
That's might be why, might be why they haven't been there.
So you guys have any thoughts at all for the planning board on the zero five ninety-two board that he'll come and subdue down? Because they, they just wanna know if you have any questions or concerns or comments or want to do that. I will say that it looks like they're starting to take down trees behind us already.
Oh, yeah?
I don't know if anyone's noticed that.
Wait, five ninety-two?
Behind it, if you're coming Harbor Street.
Yeah.
It looks a little more bare than it used to. I don't know why. Maybe they're kinda checking things out.
Trees are falling from all the wind. Harbor Street, there's an entrance.
When you, when you turn.
Behind that old barn there?
That old barn. When you turn Carter Street, then you pull into the parking lot. I didn't notice the one up on top. 'Cause I'm saying, like, it's different. That's kinda weird, 'cause I couldn't even see a walkway coming.
Walkway? Well, so they give a paved sidewalk behind those.
Yeah, behind the house, yeah.
And that's gonna be part of his.
This is an opening, but it looks, there's something here. I don't know what that is, but that is an opening into the street.
It's a chili trench.
Yeah.
But are they combining the lots? If they're having parking spots, they're doing a separate lot.
The guy's got nine acres there. The house is on one acre by itself.
But it looked like the, the parking was on the house lot.
Well, it's behind the house lot.
Right, yeah.
There's this and this, right? I think the parking is here.
No, it's like the parking's on the road.
Oh, here it is. Parking here.
Yeah.
It is.
The house is for sale too.
It is for sale?
Yeah.
I've seen the sign up there. I thought the sign was for everything.
No, what, a for-sale sign? Well, I didn't see it out there. I got, I got a listing for it.
Everybody knows everybody's business around here. I, this seems like an aggressive move to me, but. I don't know. That's a bad.
I can't wait. Well, you are, what they can't have that property, because that, that little divot there, the cars pull in, that takes out that whole corner of that building.
Yeah.
I don't know what they're coming up with there.
They came up because they needed a hundred fifty foot volume.
Oh, I know they did, yeah. I knew, I knew what they did. They weren't doing the, these, these cars to come in there.
I feel bad.
We shall sit there and do this.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Hey, anything from the attorney?
Oh.
Nothing.
Oh.
No, you guys had to hold out until the select.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay. He just didn't decide to watch the YouTube video and make any comments this time.
He didn't ask me. I didn't say they don't want me to sign the tour.
No. It's no use wasting the paper.
He ain't gonna, he ain't gonna.
No.
Okay.
Wait till.
Motion and a second? Yes.
Yes.
On the table?
Yeah, yes, that one. That's the fastest one we had all day.